Is actually November fifteenth was the deadline that we had to have.
Stand.
Do you log in on there or are you just using the public?
So it looks like we're ready.
At this time, we'll call the regular meeting at the New Ulm City Council for Tuesday, November seventeenth at four thirty PM to order. First item on the agenda is public notice by teleconference. We don't need to do that. We're all present. So go on to item number two, consent agenda items. What's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, no. Motion carries. Item number three, public hearing. Public hearing on the final plot of the M and D addition. Go ahead.
Dave Schnobrick, Community Development Director. The plat has been submitted by M and D Properties LLC. They also are the owner of the property. Planning Commission at their October twenty-ninth meeting unanimously recommended approval of the plat. The best way to describe the plat is this is one that is intended to accommodate a condominium storage building project. The current legal description of the property is lot eight through thirteen, including vacated German Street and block forty-four north. The plat would consist of sixteen lots. Fifteen lots would be for storage buildings. And the sixteenth lot would surround those fifteen lots and would serve as common ground. There would be a total of three buildings located on the property. The commission recommended approval with three conditions. Those conditions are the payment of the platting fee of six hundred thirty dollars. The provision of receiving a AutoCAD two thousand sixteen or newer format of the plat. And then that the firm submit a landscape plan with their building plans. Previously, the owner had received the necessary variances for this project from the city council. That would conclude the staffer.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody, this is a public hearing. Anybody like to be heard? Nobody on the city council? Nobody?
If nobody wants to be heard, I'll close the public hearing and offer a resolution, waive the reading, approving with conditions. Number one, two, and four. The final plat of M D addition generally located at three twenty-three Nineteenth North Street.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing, offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See you none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Item number three point two, public hearing on the two thousand, let's see. I always get this little box popping up. Two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty snow and weed removal assessments.
Councillors, this will be for the weed and, sorry, for the, for the mowing and the snow removal that the city would have completed on some properties. Those payments have not been made, so we're looking to assess those to their property taxes. We have not received any comments or anything from the people on the list or anybody else, so.
So we point that out every year that the list that we have here is the people that have not paid, not everybody that's got a ticket over the year.
Anybody else have any questions? Public hearing?
Maybe just for record, when's the last time we looked at those fees? Have we increased them?
We have, the departments look at those every year.
Okay.
We go through their process and make sure that the fees fit and recover the costs that we're putting into that process.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and offer the resolution, waive the reading, establishing the special assessments for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty weed and snow removal charges and close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See you none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item four point one, raffle gambling permit for the Saint Mary's Church. And that's for February fifth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll offer motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, no. Motion carries. Item five point one, appoint a council member to the field of position award two. You want to, you got anything or should I just handle it?
Go ahead.
Okay. We met this afternoon. We interviewed four different candidates for the position and we had outstanding candidates, which really pleased the city council. So normally we don't get that many volunteers and we're, I'd say, really excited. It was a difficult decision to come up and finalize it and get it all picked. But we did come to a conclusion and I guess what I'd like to do then at this time is offer the position to Eric. If he's interested in it yet, to fill the position. It'd take place, getting sworn in on December first meeting in December. I don't know if that the first.
December first, December one.
It is first, okay. So I guess it's up to the city council to prove it, but I could have made a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Eric. Any more discussion on it?
I want just to make a couple of comments too, I think, just to emphasize what you said. We had four folks today that interviewed and all four were just, were very unique in their approach and their interviews. And loved this city, had a passion for this city and, but all a little bit different. And what we really had to try and figure out is who was going to best fit the empty spot from Lisa Fisher. And, and who could help bring us forward and who can help, you know, we know that we need to move more technologically in, in the future and, and I think Eric brought some real enthusiasm and excitement to the position. We think that can be a benefit to all of us as we move forward. The other, that any one of them could have filled this spot. And it was so wonderful to sit through these interviews and see that. And, and it was a tough decision, but I think it was a unanimous decision that we made that this is what we think is best for this particular position. So thank you to everybody that applied, interviewed, and we hope that you'll consider joining committees and commissions and stay involved in our community and our city. Because we, we need, we need folks to keep our commissions and moving forward in our community. So thank again to all, to everybody.
Do we have a second?
We did.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So we have motion and a second. Any more discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, no. Motion carries. Congratulations, Eric.
Congratulations.
Yep, congrats.
Yep. We'll go on to item five point two, ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero thirty-nine, fifth series, second consideration, schedule fees.
Councillors, this is the second consideration, as you said, for the twenty twenty-one fee schedule. We haven't made any changes. I know there was discussion last time about some possible changes, so I will leave that up to you at this point. There were no real major changes, but the whole fee schedule has been reviewed by all the departments and the finance department and is being presented to you as you have seen it in front of you, so.
Anybody have any questions, concerns about, go ahead?
Just a follow-up to a couple of the questions that were asked at the last meeting. So for the childcare fee, this year we've done one inspection. Last year we did two inspections. And we do it countywide, so they're not particular just to New Ulm. That fee is set by the state, but we do have the ability to waive it if you, if you so choose to move forward with that. And then there is a clarification last, at the last meeting as well. The hundred and ten dollars for the amphitheater rental, that is actually just for a half-day rental, not a full-day rental. So just clarifying that.
And the daycare fees, is that, is that every other year licensed or is that an annual license?
It is a one-time fee for their initial inspection.
To get their license to start their business.
Uh, just the inspection, yes.
Inspection, okay. And I made a recommendation last time that we waive that fee. I just strongly feel that anything we can do to, to help break down barriers to start daycares. We're all supporting that. That's an area that we've all been talking about. It's, and how much revenue again? Was this two?
It was one, one this year and two last year.
So it's not going to break the bank?
No.
No. So I would hope that my fellow councillors will concur that that fee be waived again for two thousand twenty-one.
I'm fine with it. I support.
I'm okay with it. It's not enough supporting the daycare. I know we got the crisis, but.
Any little, for some people, it might just be that one, it's just so much paperwork and there's so many fees and if it's that one thing that can get them to open up a daycare, why not? It's for the little bit of money that we're going to be out, I think it's supported. So I'm going to go ahead and waive the second reading for consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero three nine, fifth series. Amending section two point nine nine of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to the schedule of city fees.
Second.
With the, oh, I'm sorry, with the exception of removing the daycare inspection fee.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to waive the second reading and consideration. Any more discussion? See you none. Please call a roll. No, we don't have to. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, no. Motion carries.
Excuse me, for this, I think normally you would do a resolution for this.
Okay.
For ordinance. I think you were correct.
Oh, call a roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes. Yes, motion carries. New business. Item six point one, twenty twenty-one budget for the Convention Visitors Bureau.
I sit on the C V B and I do know that Mr. Loft is here. Do you want to make any comments with it or? I mean, it's a bare bones budget with the COVID crisis and our hotel, hotel tax. It's bare bones.
Yeah, city, city councillor, councillor president, the C V B committee worked really, really hard on this budget to pare it down as much as possible. We are looking again to cover expenses and do some different kinds of campaigns that we haven't done in the past. So we really, we really pared it down quite a bit. You'll notice the allocated expenses from this year versus last year is considerably less. That is because the C V B voted and the board approved a ten percent discount starting in about June this year. And we're going to carry that over into the twenty twenty-one season.
I mean, you know, we're all aware, we look through our sales tax collections and whatnot. I was a little disappointed because September was actually a little lower than August was and I don't think it's.
We're still waiting for the second payment.
Yeah.
That's good news. Okay. Good. I hope it comes in a hundred and ten percent above, but.
Occupancy rate, it ranged about from twenty-eight to thirty-three percent statewide. Our numbers were a little bit inflated because of the northern resorts. We're really busy this summer. So you're going to see an occupancy rate in Minnesota go way down.
Right.
This next month.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions for me?
With that being said, I just want to approve the twenty twenty-one budget for the Convention and Visitors Bureau beginning on January one, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, no. Motion carries. Item six point two, seven million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand general obligation sales tax revenue bond series twenty twenty B.
Councillors, we did complete the bond sale this morning for the remaining renew fund bonds. John Burmeister, our, our bond advisor is on the phone, so he can explain that sale to you.
Go ahead, John.
All right. All right, very good. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, very good. So I believe Nicole shared with you the results of sale. As Nicole indicated, we did accept proposals for, from underwriters this morning on the sale of seven million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand of local option sales tax bonds. You can see with the results of sale, it's three pages, five bids. Piper Sandler was the low bidder. Northland Securities was the cover. F H N out of Memphis, Tennessee, Robert W. Baird out of Milwaukee, and then Stiefel Nicholas was kind of the, the high. And if you kind of look to the inside halfway in, in that first page, you'll see a kind of acronym called T I R. That's a true interest rate. And I'm pleased to tell you that the true interest rate on this is a, was, as it was bid, is a one point two nine zero nine percent. And when I saw that, I was just kind of amazed because this is an eighteen-year term of a bond issue and we're now borrowing at, lower than one point three percent over the life of these bonds. In fact, if you look at the, we did provide you here with the yields. And so if you're an investor, the yield is what you auctionally actually earn on the bonds. And you can see unfortunately for investors, that it takes them all the way out to year ten before you actually earn one percent. And then goes up to one point seven by year two thousand eighteen. So that's a really low interest rate. The cover was a one thirty-three, so pretty tight, pretty quite tight cover. And then Stiefel Nicholas came in at one point five four percent. When we had originally worked up the budget, we had two and a half percent thinking maybe rates would come up a little bit. But in fact, they've been very stable. And I think this is a kind of a, really a great example of Nicole kind of leading the charge, realizing that the interest rates are still very low. Now's the good time to get into the market. In fact, a lot of the supply was put into the market in the month of October to get ahead of the election, so supply is actually, the demand is still very strong. You can see here then with the results of this, the proceeds to the projects would be about a hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars higher. And then the debt service on these would be seventy thousand dollars a year lower annually than what we had originally budgeted. So with, and then as you can see here in the very bottom part in the first page, after bids, we did resize the bonds because there was a little bit of a premium. So we ended up decreasing the power amount of the bonds down to seven million, six eighty-five. And then that lowered the true interest cost or true interest rate at to a one point two six nine four percent. And we did want to make sure that, I mean, this series and the other series that you sold here a few months ago, that we kept the bond proceeds below ten million dollars. We were able to keep the bank qualification status and that provides the city with very attractive interest rate status. And so we wanted to make sure we limited the proceeds to the seven million, eight seventy-one, eight twenty-nine to keep that B Q status. And so with that, I'll, we'll open it up to any that you may have. And if there aren't any, P F M would recommend that the city council award this to Piper Sandler and Company. With revised power amount, seven million, six eighty-five at a true interest rate of one point two six nine four percent.
Thanks, John. Anybody have any questions?
No, I think we better grab this while we can.
Motion quick.
I'm going to, I will go ahead and offer the resolution, waive the reading, authorizing issuance and awarding the sale and fixing the term to Piper Sandler and Company.
Second.
As stated on the document.
We have a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See you none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, John. Good job.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Item six point three, Moody Investment Service Bond Rating.
Councillors, this is just a follow-up. Since we were issuing again, we needed to get another assessment from Moody's on the bond rating. They won't actually issue another statement since they already issued one related to the twenty nineteen financial statements. But they did maintain the double A two rating for those bonds that we just, you just approved the sale of.
Thank you, Nicole. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, and this is, John, again, the only thing I would add is Nicole determined that the rating agencies at this point are zeroing in on it. And it's kind of like the only thing they want to know is how is the community doing with the coronavirus pandemic hitting the finances in a lot of areas? A lot of people are struggling through that based on very economically developed volatility in their rates. And as the press release reported, once again, the city of New Ulm is, is taking care of business. You expect a small surplus in twenty-one or in twenty. And then you balance the budget for twenty-one. So the rating agencies are kind of a little surprised by that. But again, the city is taking care of your budget over the years and so it wasn't real surprising when they look at your history. So I think the city's doing really well in this, in this environment and the, the rating agencies confirmed your double A two, which provides a really attractive low interest rate to the city.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Nicole or John? Nope.
Also good news.
All right. Do we have a motion?
No, not yet. Just need a motion to receive the report.
Okay.
I'll offer motion to receive the report from Moody's Investment Services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, no. Motion carries. Item six point four, use of unimproved portion of Oak Street. John?
Good evening, councillors, council president, John Isley, planner with the city of New Ulm. This, this license agreement is.
Talk a little louder than that.
Maybe we should take this off.
That a little bit.
This better? Okay. I'm going to give a brief overview of what's being proposed here. There is an unimproved portion of Oak Street that is planted to the south of the. There is an unimproved portion of Oak Street that is plotted to the south of the home property and to the north of the Mertz property. Oak Street itself has been improved from Garden Street all the way to North Highland Avenue, but that leaves this remaining unimproved area between Oak Street and Raymond Drive, so it's up a steep slope, and at this point in time, the public utilities and the city engineering department don't have any plans to use that unimproved portion of Oak Street, and it would remain unimproved. But with that being said, the city engineering department would like the city to continue to maintain ownership over that right-of-way for any future use, or if there were to be any improvements in that right-of-way into the future. So what is being requested is the property owners, the property owner to the north of this unimproved right-of-way, and then the property owner to the south of this unimproved right-of-way are requesting a license agreement from the city to use a 30-foot wide by 120-foot long, or 3,600 square foot area of that unimproved Oak Street right-of-way adjacent to their properties. I have attached in the packet an aerial photo of both the home and Mertz property, which shows that unimproved area, and then the proposed area to be used by those adjacent property owners. The homes are proposing to use the property to continue to just maintain it, to mow it, and maintain it as well as locate a place at in that right-of-way. The Mertz's are proposing to maintain and locate a small and movable storage shed in that right-of-way. Notice of the request was sent to the city and PUC departments, and there were no concerns from those departments. The city has previously allowed the use of public rights away for private purposes through a license agreement in the past. Staff would recommend the approval of this request with a couple of conditions. One, that the proposed activities, if the proposed activities disturb more than 1,000 square feet of land area, the homes and the Mertz's will need to secure a stormwater permit and submit an erosion control plan. Two, the homes and Mertz's will enter into separate license agreements with the city identifying the activities that can take place within the right-of-way, and the agreement will be prepared by the city attorney and signed by the city manager and finance director on behalf of the city. And then three, the homes and Mertz's will each pay the cost of recording their individual agreements with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Those license agreements have already been prepared and were submitted with this request for council action.
And no concerns from neighbors, or?
We haven't had any concerns regarding these license agreement from neighbors.
I haven't heard anything as well-being in my ward, so I'll go ahead and approve the request of Alan Home at 1114 Raymond Drive, Linda Bob Mertz, 1106 Raymond Drive, to use the unimproved portion of Oak Street abutting their properties for certain specified activities, and direct the city attorney to prepare a lease agreement for that purpose.
Second.
With the three conditions?
With the conditions, thank you.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
I just want to ask a question, does this transfer then if they sell the property?
No.
So then they'd have to petition again?
Yes.
Would that be correct?
If the.
If either party would sell?
Excuse me, I believe the way that the agreements are worded is they would have to notify the city, but I believe that they would transfer. This is a not-exclusive license, it's not an easement, it's a license, which means we retain the right to take it away at any time. So if we would want to use the property, we can terminate it at our will, but I think it's something that would otherwise go with the property. So these are some substantial areas. I think in the past, when the city has approved these, it hasn't been to the extent of the areas involved here. I don't know if there's any long-term plan to ever use Oak Street where it's been laid out there. It doesn't sound like the PUC wants it, or I don't know if we'd ever be building a road with the topographical problems there. If it would be vacated, normally they would have to petition and pay a vacation fee for the use of the property, and then it would be their property, they would get it. Here, the city is retaining it. So that's the request that they've made, and I guess it's now up to you to decide if you want to go along with that.
But again, we can revoke it at any time.
Correct, yes.
I'm all right with it.
Thank you. Any more questions? See you none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no, motion carries. Items, thank you, John. Item 6.5, library donations and memorials.
I'm going to offer the resolution, waive the reading, accepting donations and memorials to the New Ulm Public Library for the period May 2, 2020 through November 4, 2020, and I know we normally don't do this, I always read the park and rec ones, but it was brought to my attention why we don't read them, to give these people a little recognition, so I'm going to nominate Les to read through it.
Can we nominate the new guy? Can't we nominate the new guy?
No, I'm going to read through it, okay?
No, I can do it, too.
Oh, go ahead. In memory of Betty Dormandy, the donor was Betty and Doug Royger, and Wallace and Jean, cash donation of $50. In memory of Lois Hurley, okay, this is Wallace and Jean Wellman, cash of $50. Bonita Melting from Trudy Bearneck, cash of $15. Donor Hy-Vee, cash $10. A donor, Gary Sassenberg, for books, $18. Esther Radke, Betty and Doug Royger, cash of $50. Anonymous via Amazon, a book, $24.99. In memory of Esther Radke, anonymous cash, $40. In memory of Esther Radke, Priscilla Whelan, cash $10. In memory of Esther Radke, Phil and Maureen Leish, cash $20. Memory of Esther Radke, family of Esther Radke share, $210.39. Memory of Joseph Platts, Linda Lindquist, cash $25 donation. Kiwanis Club donor, cash 140. Optimus Club, cash $850. In memory of Joseph Platts, Jan Platts, cash $25. The Lions Club of New Ulm, cash $500. Catherine K. Simpson, in memory of Lee and Jane Sturm, cash $25. Also in memory of Catherine Simpson, Ben and Vicky Peiser, cash donation, $25. Catherine, in memory of Catherine Simpson, Prairie Peacemakers, cash donation, $25. Another one, Catherine Simpson, donor Donna and Marvin Sluter, cash $50. The one here is, and pumpkin, cash $50, pumpkins, I really don't know what that means, or Hy-Vee. Is that what it, 20 pumpkins? Okay, $100 value. And then one last one, in memory of Catherine Simpson, Marcy Halverson, cash donation of $25 for a grand total of $2,638.38. Next one is yours last.
So I'll second that resolution.
We have a motion and a second to offer a resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See you none, finance director, please call a roll.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6.6, ordinance number 2020-040, fifth series, first consideration, zoning. Dave got something on that one?
More, John?
So before you, you have the first consideration, and this is in reference to the rezoning that you voted on or took action on at the last council meeting, the lots owned by Bev Lunenberg, rezoning from R3 to I2, where they're going to be doing the wrestling facility down on, what is that, on German Street, on South German Street.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and waive the reading of the first consideration of this ordinance, 2020-040, fifth series, amending section 9.04 of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to zoning in the city.
Second. We have a motion and a second to waive the reading, any more discussion? See you none, finance director, please call a roll.
It's just the first.
First, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no, motion carries. And I guess that does it, so no more business, meeting adjourned, we'll go into the work session.[1785.83]